I can definitely confirm that we will have a city council meeting tonight, but I cannot confirm it there. We don't need anything for those jokes. Putting that out there, just in case. All right. So we have this evening's regular session agenda. We also have the approval of the March fourth city council minutes and the approval of the March fourteenth special meeting minutes or their arrangements to the minutes that we need to be aware of. If not, a letter came motion.
On the move approval of the consistent agenda?
Nothing.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Very none, which is Carrie. Thank you. And Councilperson Page, and I did see the names, doesn't let you know. All right, tonight we have three proclamations. The first one is with the Family Justice Center, and I know our agenda says Rachel Schutz will be presenting the proclamation, but instead I think Danielle Page is here and she will give us an update and talk to us about the Family Justice Center, and we also have the Fair Housing Month of 2024, and we have the National Community Development Month of 2024 as well. So at this time, Danielle, you'd like to come up to the table. Would you like to share anything about Family Justice Center or any updates or anything like that? Before I read the proclamation?
You can do the other before or after the proclamation.
I would like to do the ten years before, so if you don't mind saying your name and address, that'd be great.
My name and address?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Danielle Page. My address is three one eight zero six Montlisle Boulevard, Montlisle. And I'm here in representing
And I'm here representing the Family Justice Center. I'm a board member for the Family Justice Center. I'm Rachel Schutz, our executive director, who wishes he could be here tonight. So I had a conflict. And what I'd like to share is first and foremost is thank you to the council and the entire city for your continued support, for all the great work that we do here in Washington County to help for survivors of all types of abuse. As we know, this month is not only Child Abuse Prevention Month, but also Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and the week of April twenty second is Crime Victims Rights Week. What I'd like to share is some of the good work that we have been doing. I know Rachel will be here at the next meeting to go over the full stats, but just as a snippet for the proclamation, the Family Justice Center in 2023 has served fifty five hundred survivors. The CARES Northwest has served six hundred and ten for Washington County children, and SARC, our Sexual Assaults Rights advocates, hundreds of people. So unfortunately, this is something that we have to insist with in Washington County. It's an unfortunate byproduct of some of the things that happen in the homes, but that's what we're here for, and we cannot do it alone. We need not only Washington County, but every city's support. So thanks again for everything that you do here. And also just a little plug for Voices of Hope is tomorrow, April second, at the Walters Arts Community Center, I believe at six p.m. lodges, five p.m. is where the gathering is. So if anybody had the ability to attend me, would appreciate and support. All the survivors would be there with their art, and so it'll be a nice way for them to heal and share their stories. And I will close by saying, you know, building connects communities helps reduce the likelihood of sexual abuse, assault, and harassment in our communities. So the more we are working together to just be a stronger community, I know North Plains is a wonderful city. I do live here. You know, the stronger we are together. So thank you again. Thank you, Danielle. You know, I know that we, the City of North Plains has supported the Family Justice Center since inception, and I remember the ribbon hanging that we all did with all the mayors and all the electeds, I mean, so many people. And it was such a great collective, you know, people showing their support for the center, and I know it's suddenly grown throughout the year. So, you know, it's unfortunate that your numbers climb, but it's fortunate that you're there for these folks who need the help. And so we really appreciate that.
Well, thank you. And, you know, everything that the city does to help us spread the word. Unfortunately, a lot of it's already there. We are hoping that growing in numbers just means that there's more awareness, that we are here for support, and not that the numbers are climbing. Unfortunately, it's a little bit of both. So, yeah, thank you.
So I just want to, you know, therefore resolve that, that myself and the city council, we do proclaim April twenty twenty four to be Child Abuse Prevention Month, Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and the week of April twenty second through the twenty sixth, twenty twenty four, to be Crime Victims Rights Week. We also reaffirm our commitment to supporting a coordinated and collaborative community of providers that deliver intervention and prevention of services, prevention, preventative services of violence and abuse all year long. So we're here for you. Thank you.
We appreciate it. Thank you so much.
The other pro, we have two other proclamations, and I will be brief. The second proclamation is for the Fair Housing Month, April twenty twenty four. And so therefore, we have resolved that the city council, the City of North Plains hereby claims April twenty twenty four to be Fair Housing Month and encourages all community members to support and endorse fair housing, reaffirm their commitment to fair housing for all, and wholeheartedly recognize these rights and responsibilities throughout the year. And last but not least, the Community Development Law Grant Program and the Home Investment Partnership Program. The National Community Development Month is also April twenty twenty four. And we have further resolved that this community urges Congress and the administration to recognize the outstanding work being done locally and nationally by the Community Development Law Grant Program and the Home Investment Partnerships Program by supporting increased funding for both programs in fiscal year twenty twenty four. Therefore, we have resolved that the City of North Plains designates the month of April twenty twenty four as National Community Development Week in support of these two valuable programs that have made tremendous contributions to the viability of the housing stock, infrastructure, public services, and economic vitality of our community. All right, moving on in our agenda, we're down to seven, item seven, which is public comment. This is the time that we ask those folks in the hall, in Jesse May's community hall and online. So public comment, this is the time that we wish those wishing to speak about items not on the agenda to come forward. And Lori, I want to ask first, have we had anything submitted by writing?
In writing prayer to the meeting?
No? Okay, thank you. And it looks like we have three folks that do want to speak. And so the first one, I believe, is Laura. Would you like to come up to the podium? Are you, it's my understanding that you wanted to share some information with us, or?
Yeah, Andy asked me to come and talk about our numbers and everything and what's happening with the food.
Okay, so name and address for the record, and happy sharing.
So my name is Laura Dexheimer. My address is two four four six zero Northwest Green Mountain Road, and that's in Banks, nine seven one zero six. So in front of you, you'll find our staffs for the food bank. From when we first started, we had twenty seniors in fifteen households. And now, last month, or last week, we had seventy four seniors and forty eight different households. Today was crazy busy, and we added nine more seniors and a total of five households. Three of those households came from the City of North Plains, one came from Hillsborough, one came from Forestville. So our senior count, we're now up to a hundred and twenty two seniors, plus the nine that we've received today. We're at two hundred and fifteen families, so those are non-seniors. And our numbers just keep growing. We've got several families who are, and oh, we're at, I guess I don't have the same sheet, you guys. We're like in a hundred and two households within the City of North Plains that we're currently serving. So the problem that we're running into, as most of you know, we're not part of the Oregon Food Bank. We're not able to get into the Oregon Food Bank for at least two years. They have that closed. And they said that the Oregon Food Bank is going to start closing some, or lowering their numbers. I don't know exactly what that means, but so we are strictly funded by community donations, and we need funding, you know, to keep this fall rolling. We need funding. So I don't know if there's something that we can work with, with the city on that, to help get funding. Or I'm working with Senator Weber to see what we can get through the state of Oregon, which takes a very long time. It's not like I can go and give us money. We haven't been staying. So I'm really trying to figure out how we're going to make this continue to be able to feed all these people. So we're spending on average about a thousand dollars a month, but that is completely reliant also on two other food banks that I go and pick up every Monday off. And I don't want to be that guest who never leaves my house. So, you know, I've got to figure out how I'm going to keep this going and be able to financially keep it with us and not rely on other people. So and then I found out, it sounds like, Terry, you may know more, that we are going to possibly be starting to pay rent over at the senior center. I don't know how much. I haven't seen the contract yet. I just know it's coming, which makes sense. We're using their electricity and everything else, but, you know, to be able, and we're not getting that many donations sent in to us. The last one, I think, was a couple months ago. And so I'm watching our checking account going down, and I'm like, okay, we've got, I've got to do something quickly. So that's where I'm at. We're doing a fundraiser for the statewide garage sale, and we're getting a lot of people within the community donating to us. So I'm like picking up every rock to see where I can find money. So that's kind of, oh, and then we're also delivering, last week, we delivered four to fourteen shut-ins. So those are our seniors who can't leave their house. So we call them every week, and we take their order of one day a month, and then we pay them their fee every week. So that's us in a nutshell, kind of the facts.
Well, I know that you're, you're working your fingers to the bone, and and just in full transparency, I'm on the senior center board of directors. That's why you made that reference to me
Yeah.
in the rent piece. So I just wanted to make sure that folks knew that. And no, I have not seen the contract either. So
Yeah.
just, just, you know, for full transparency. Have you, are there any federal programs that you could apply for? I mean, I'm just trying to think of
Yeah.
opportunities.
I have applied for a lot of grants with different things, and they send us a thousand dollars, but I asked them for twenty five thousand, but I got a thousand, you know? So it's, and there's several that I submitted and haven't heard back from. So I'm like sending stuff out all the time, and I don't have a problem writing grants. I can do that. It's easy. But, you know, it's just trying to find it all and where I can go. And a lot of the grant writing, you know, you write it, well, you guys know, you write it, and then you don't hear for a year. So it's not like I can go, oh, yay, I won it today. So
Sure.
Sure. So
Any comments or any questions for Laura?
I'm trying to get my head around that. You have a thousand dollars, and it's going to be crazy coming up. Come on. How much money do you guys think it matters?
Right. It's, it's in this. You know, when we first started it, we got money, and then we got eight thousand dollars from the previous food bank that senior center gave to us. That's what we're living on right now, is that eight thousand.
And that's being gone down?
Yeah. So that's why I'm kind of in panic mode. And like, I've got to figure out how I'm going to keep this going. So
Are you going to type in other nonprofits and see how they do the fundraising and what kind of?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. And so it's, you know, it's finding the space, and you've got to schedule it. You know, there's a lot that goes into putting together a fundraiser. I used to own my own business for fifteen years, and I did a lot of this kind of stuff for other organizations, so I'm pretty, I'm really familiar with how to do fundraising, but, you know, it takes quite a bit to get there, and, you know, we're fresh. I started this in November, so
We have a hotline for the, am I, am I interrupting the count? I don't really get into the intel, but we're going to go, so they're flying, it's ten dollars an hour, but they're for that. So we do some kind of city fundraising, a big bunch of people come out there. Everybody helps do something, and that's it. That's like a solid launch team stack, and we have a resource.
Yeah, and we are part of the intel program.
Okay.
Yeah. But I will be happy to do any now. I will get back.
Is it, what's coming up? Is you're getting the food, but it's the rent is what you're, is what taking the money away from you?
No, we haven't started beginning. I'm just forecasting and I'm putting together my budget.
Right.
And so I don't know what the rent is going to be. I'm just looking at, you know, I go to grocery outlet, and, you know, what I spent, like, I just went there the other day, and I spent four hundred and eighty seven dollars.
Oh, okay.
At Grocery Outlet, getting canned foods and things like that, but it's, and I'm hoping to be able to get it, you know, the farmers to bring us food, you know, all the fruit and vegetables and things like that, but we've got meat and a lot of other things.
So it's more, if I may, it's more cash than out of your pocket than rent? You're spending money on food, not so much the rent?
No, everything is, right now, everything is food.
All right.
So, but, you know, you've always got to be looking ahead and making sure this is how I'm going to get to see and then, you know, keep going. So that's where I'm at. So right now, we're just paying for food.
And you said there's a hundred and three North Plains houses that you serve? Close in North Plains?
It's a hundred and two, and then we just added three more, so it's a hundred and five households that we're serving here in North Plains.
Okay.
That it? Thank you, Laura. Joe Slavinsky. Would you please state your name and address for the line?
I have two handouts, but I only have one copy, so you can look at it.
Thank you.
Rose Polwinski, thirty two zero ninety five Northwest Pacific Street, North Plains, Oregon. I came here because they just put in three twenty second street that connects the Pacific, and it's just a elbow. There's no T-intersection, no, and there's two stop signs there. You have no choice but to make a left or a right. It's not like you can do anything else. But there's two stop signs there. Then on the next street, three hundred and twenty, that connects the cottage. Now, going from cottage to three twenty, you don't have to stop. But going from three twenty at the cottage, there's another stop sign. Well, you can, coming off a cottage, you can only make a right. So there's nobody, you can't get T-boned by going through there. And I just wonder why we have so many stop signs that are semi-useless. You guys got a government grant on how many stop signs you put up to get extra money for, or what?
I, I don't know the answer to that, but I'd like to refer to my Public Works Director. He's not here this evening, but I can certainly bring this to his attention. And if I can reach out to you, would that be all right?
Yeah, that's just fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Erin Nichols, please. Name and address for the line.
Good afternoon, good evening. So, Mayor Page, the record page, Erin Nichols, eleven thousand Northwest Jackson, Fort Worth, Hillsborough, Oregon, ninth of the month, two forty. I want to speak to you tonight just regarding the upcoming, uh, every go down your reference, sure you guys.
Did you speak up a little bit?
Oh, yeah.
You're the minor, so
Yeah, I know that. I emailed it to you, so
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, of course. I realize we're not in agreement on whether or not this referendum should have gone forward, and, but that question's not just decided judge rule in the ballot. But I think it's in our power to decide what information does the voters go to the poll that they've heard from and how they heard it. And I was hoping that we can agree in this election season that we'll put facts first and openly discuss and debate the merits of what this four ninety. I'm happy to do that in kind of whatever way is works well for you all. I would come to any forum we want, I would come to any of those things. And I would be very sure to stick to facts and that sort of thing. I know that's been an issue that you've worried about in the past. And I would, I would love to be able to do, to discuss that with you all and the voters. I think it would be, it would be helpful for everyone. So, so that's, that's just what I'm coming to say, is, you know, and that's very, like I said, I'd be happy to come to whatever, whatever is, is good for you all. And, and I guess also, in the other thing, while I'm talking about facts, I guess, the other thing I'm hoping is that you'll read, we have a report done by a city planner, Rhonda, who has retired, he's retired now, has an entire career of experience in smaller Oregon towns. It's an order of magnitude study on this based on the EMA and the HNA. And I said it tonight, you just, you just got it finished and organized well enough. And the reason I'm giving it to you all first and now is because I, I want, like I said, I want to have discussion of the facts and the discussion, and so, and discussion about that. I don't want to save it, like, try to use it as a gotcha at the end of the election season or anything like that. It's out there. It's available to you all. And so it does have things I think are worth discussing, a general idea of water and transportation costs, a general idea of what would mean to have two big industrial areas, maybe decide how, how, how it'll look in the city. And so, and so I want to bring that to you, and I wanted to just say that I'm happy to discuss this however and wherever. I mean, you all have my address, my, my email, and you're welcome to reach out if that's something you want to do, but not understand, but thanks for that.
Thank you very much. John Platt?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, again, member of the city council. My name is John Platt, and two P two six nine Northwest Youngin, in Hovation. And I've been asked by the Chair of the CPO eighty to start to bid about a forum that's taking place on April the twentieth to discuss a dispute that we have. And that dispute is a very important one for us all. It's important for the City of North Plains. It's important as well for the farmers who live in the area. It's important for the future of our families and the people who are, who are really in this area, because North Plains is a very important part of our lives. I know it's, the City of North Plains is, I journey to the City of North Plains practically every day for one thing or other. And like many, I'm also concerned about the quality of life that we have here and the ability to continue using this wonderful farm life and so forth. Chair, the Chair of CPO eight, Madge Alas, asked me to issue an invitation, to present an invitation to you, Madam Mayor, to attend a forum on the twentieth of April to discuss the dispute that we have, to discuss the future of North Plains and how that dispute will, will move towards resolution. Because whether or not the ballot measure is valid, whether or not the ballot measure, referendum, is reported or approved, nonetheless, we're all going to be planning for the future, no matter what happens at that point. And this is really an opportunity for us to come together and, and sort of move away from the polarization model that we have currently in this, this nation as a whole. And we have some discussions that will be a basis for whatever happens in the future with this particular dispute that we have over the expansion of North Plains. So we'd like you to come to our forum, the forum for CPO eight, you know, the making place that even has reserve the new wiring in Hovation. And if you have the air there, thank you.
Thank you, John. Appreciate that. And she's given me until April second to reply to her email, but I certainly appreciate you delivering that message as well. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Anyone else? All right, carrying that, we're going to move on to our resolutions. We have two this evening. The first resolution is Resolution number twenty two fifty seven, the appointment of Don Weber to the North Plains Parks and Recreation Board for a term through June thirtieth, twenty twenty seven. So I know in the past, we've invited appointments, folks to come up, who have been appointed to boards and commissions, and talk to us a little bit about themselves, who they are, and what they, their experience, and what they hope to bring to the board. So with that, I'd like to invite Don Weber up to the, to the table here. Introduce yourself, name, address for the record, and tell us why you want to be a part of the board, the Parks and Recreation Board.
Don Weber, two eight eight four zero Northwest Carter Street. And I'm a lifelong person. It's just in, mostly to the outdoors, parks, recreation, London, Montana. So my love is really of the outdoors. My wife and I retired to the North Plains to help with some grandkids. And I'm just excited to get more involved. I think my passion for both my wife and I is to kind of help people get moving again. I think partly what happened in the pandemic is people slowed down. They stayed in their houses. They didn't get out enough. My wife and I are both big outdoors walkers and doing things, and we've got a lot of people that just stopped moving, a lot of kids, the same way. They stayed inside, got hooked on video games, whatever, you know, you had to entertain them somehow. So I guess my excitement with Parks and Rec is, um, uh, a lot of it on the recreation side, now that we've already got this one park, which I think, uh, we're all very proud of. But the recreation side of looking for creative ways that we can get people moving again. You know, I've been talking to Andy, and that will probably come later, but, uh, ideas to use our local gyms, we have two brand-new gyms in our elementary schools that don't get used much at night. So using those, which we can do very cheaply, and just trying to explore different ways, uh, to enable people to just kind of get moving again. Kids especially, they've just gotten the habit of not doing very much, and, uh, and I think all ages on up to seniors too, giving them opportunities. I think it's been said by others, but I think the long-term dream would be to have some sort of recreation center here, ideally with some kind of pool that's not so good for different ages and. So anyway, I look at the committee as a wonderful way to kind of start things moving in that direction. Uh, the one thing I have to my advantage is I am a retired person. I'm very aware, because I've done what you're all doing at different points while I was trying to work, and it's much harder to do it than once you retire. And so what I bring is, uh, time. Uh, I've been involved in lots of committees and organizing things over the years, and now I feel like I have more time, and this is something that excites me, so, that's it.
Thank you, Don. Any councilor, any questions or comments to add?
Yeah, Don, um, Jim James, I'm very excited to have somebody up there talking about doing something new, getting, getting the schools used or gym maybe at night or kids doing basketball or whatever you guys want to do. Uh, we've had the parks do, uh, musical parks and that kind of thing to bring them together. Thank you for having a new thought process of adding something helpful you can do besides what we can do it. Uh, I like your energy, thanks.
That's what Sheldon.
Yeah, I, if I'm not mistaken, did you serve on the planning commission?
No.
Okay, so have you served on a, a committee or commission here before?
I've been on the Parks and Rec.
Right, so, I was thinking you had been on board, so you, you already have some insight into, you know, how that operates. So I, I, I just think it's fantastic you're stepping up. Uh, maybe you have more time, but I know a lot of retired people that don't have a whole lot more time when they retire. So it's still a sacrifice, and we appreciate that, so that's all I really have.
I have to stay in moderate shape, able to chase the ground.
Um, Counselor Payton, I wanted to chime in, check in with you.
You know, I will just also echo, um, Don, thank you so much for stepping up, and I see your brilliant ideas and your involvement and your want to better our community. And I wish I could clone that, um, and I just want to say thank you for, um, being part of our community and helping make it a better place.
Echo, 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 um, your turkey brand, we really need to do more for that, I like that idea. I did one, I didn't do this past year, but I did it here before, right? And I ran, walked it, but I think it's a great idea, but I do too, I love your energy and your commitment to want to get the kids and the families together and get them outside and getting, getting them moving again. Thank you. All right. What is the motion, Counselor?
Madam Mayor, uh, move that we adopt Resolution number two-two-five-seven.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a first and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion carried, welcome aboard, Don. Uh, Resolution, uh, eight, eight B is Resolution twenty-two fifty-nine, adopting the Economic Development Commission bylaws. I don't know, Adam, uh, Bill? Is, both your names are on the memo, but I'm going to go to you first.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, so, um, before you are the bylaws that the EDC, um, as charged by the ordinance you adopted to establish them permanently as of January one, and, and, um, they dove right into the bylaws process, but that was the first requirement of, of becoming a permanent body, was come up with their own bylaws, um, that meet your requirement, your council's requirement of being consistent with city ordinance, city charter, and state law. And so that's what they did over the course of three meetings and three different ex officios, listening and asking questions during that time. So, um, those bylaws, bylaws are before you. In the staff memo, um, for the resolution, I kind of cover some things that, um, they discussed a lot and chose to put in here at their discretion, because they're with, kind of within the rules, um, and elaborate upon, um, some of the rules that they're allowed, they're required to have. Um, so I, I don't have to go into the weeds on each one of them, um, but I'm happy to answer questions about any of them, but this, this was really kind of a set of bylaws that they wanted to, um, put before you, you all, um, to consider and, uh, for them to be able to use.
Any comments or questions for Bill?
I only had one comment, that was related to, uh, succession of terms. If, if I read it correctly, and I did go through it, um, pretty thoroughly, uh, it looks like they agreed that they felt the direction should be that no more than two consecutive terms should be served by a chair, is that correct?
Counselor Sheldon, your understanding is correct.
Okay, well, generally, I know most of the work gets done in committee, and having that leadership and sometimes the continuity of that experience can be pretty helpful. I just want to make sure that, that, uh, you know, two years doesn't seem like enough to me, but, um, I know that they're going to be there and have a voice. So I certainly am okay with that, I just wanted to be sure I understood that correctly.
Yeah. Um. I was, I think, one of three ex officios, um, and that was the last one, where they sort of bunk everything up, but, um, I certainly appreciate their openness and willingness to come to the City Council on a quarterly basis, uh, to give us updates, um, regarding the activities and recommendations. So I thought that was a, um, a pretty great gesture, and I'm glad they included that. Any other, uh, Counselor Payton, I want to start with you, uh, any comments or questions? Nope, okay, anyone else?
I also wanted to, uh, for Bob, uh, wanting to come in quarterly to give us updates and what they specifically need or what they're finding. I guess we translate helpful, uh, ex officios go there, but the continuity of all less people, we have, we have a lot of value, and I think that was pretty wise, so, thanks.
All right, any other comments? If not, uh, what's the motion, Council?
I'll move for approval of Resolution number two-two-five-nine.
I'll second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion carried, all right? Moving on, uh, nothing to report on unfinished business or new business. Um, Andy, we're in your city manager report.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I don't have a lot to add since Friday's report, I guess I will just note, since Don is here, yes, we have been chatting with him about some ideas that he's been, uh, pursuing with the Parks and Rec Board to kind of get kids and, and their parents more active. Um, and especially utilizing the assets we have in the, in each, each side of the community in those new schools. So he's met with, uh, myself, he's met with, uh, me and Bill, kind of looking at, uh, our Parks and Recreation budget. We may have, we may be able to, um, look at funding of, uh, sort of a pilot program that Don's kind of looking at. He's been working with the school district and the Parks Board on doing some after-school things, once a week at each, uh, at each school, um, probably for a series of what, it's six, six or eight weeks? Yeah, something like that, um, to the end of, to the end of the school year. So, um, uh, based on some, uh, some of the budget from, say, the, the Fourth of July, for instance, it's tough for us to do fireworks right now, but we do have a budget for fireworks. We, we, we should, we could be able to shuffle that around to do this pilot for him. And then that's really just to see if, if folks like it, and then, uh, finding more activities in each of those schools to, to utilize that. Mayor, you and I met with the school, school district, and they're very much on board with that, they very much champion that. Um, they even encourage their teachers too, to pay them to be there to, to help chaperone or to help out too, in, in case we don't have enough parents there as well. So we're kind of, kind of turning over these stones to see if we can just offer more in the way of recreation, considering we don't have the, the personnel for that.
And the superintendent even suggested, if there are teachers who are willing to do that, that they would actually encourage them to come to the Parks Board and, um, talk to the board to get an, an idea of, you know, what you're thinking and, and that sort of thing. So, uh, I think that's a great opportunity, you know, if we could hopefully open up and, and make happen.
Yep, so, uh, more to come there, I think the Parks Board is in a good place now, they're, they're formulating their own work plan, Don's coming back into a good time, there's some good energized members there. So we have to talk to them about doing a quarterly update as well, could be a, a good thing to do. Um, uh, other than that, um, I think, uh, based on the occasional Friday reports, you have a good idea of what's going on. Construction is, it's nice to have a couple of dry days for all the work in and on, on, um, Commercial and Three Thirteenth, but those guys are, um, making good progress there, and they have replaced, um, about all the water line on Three Thirteenth that they were meant to do, and then, uh, repaving, um, after that. So if there are any questions about anything, Counselor Smith?
So, backflow testing, I mean, we received our letter and been done already. With all the new housing, is there a better way of having our guys sit there sending these out every year, kind of program? Plus, if they send them out, they get them back, check off who's, who sent them out, who hasn't. Is there a, a way to make that better, or?
Yeah, let me, let me check with our backflow specialist, um, Javier, who's really taken this, taken on this work and made it his own program, see what ideas he made. I know he's, he had discussions with Lamar pretty early, early on to try to, uh, eliminate too much, too much work or redundancy, but let me see what he's thinking.
This is done every year.
Mm-hmm.
So I just, I thought there might be a faster way to do it. Because then you got to check what happens after we don't get them back and the time taken to make sure that they follow the, the residents follow through to do it.
Yeah, the, the eventual, uh, we, we just didn't have enough hours in the day to do it, but the eventual goal is to go in, is to, uh, I believe, do something similar to what a couple of other water districts do, and that's, they'll just take care of the testing and then take it off a residence bill, but you got to set up a program where it's an opt-in system, it just, it takes a little time to, to do all those things. But I'm, I'm thinking now that Javier is fully in that role, um, that's going to be the goal for, for twenty twenty-five.
And then second, I see this coming back again, which I disagree with, is a traffic circle on Inco and West Union and Commercial. We have a, a cir- circle park, which is, doesn't have a lot of cars compared to what's going to happen here. And if you're not paying attention as a walker, people do fly around those things. And you're talking about amount of cars that comes through here. Second, it's going to shut down, uh, Sunset Ridge from the community for nine months plus, from what I've seen with these traffic circles. That means police, fire, uh, rerouting, a lot of people come down Jackson School of West Union and in the town because it, that's all time trying to go down Glencoe. You start backing those cars up and Glencoe down, twenty-six, that's another problem. There's a big checklist and stuff. I think they're dangerous, but if it does go through, the city needs a really double-check. And, and if you've got different events in the city, that cuts off. The events, like, from different people, you've got the Elephant Garden Festival, that's another problem, of where all these people are going to try to come in at, so.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for the comments. I think it's a little early to, to know what the options are going to be there, um, what the alignment would be like, what the timeframe would be like, what the cost would be like. Um, really, it's going to be looking at, but the points that you raise also point to the fact that that's intersection is not well-designed currently. The entire sort of community hinges on everything that happens there, you know, it's the connector to east and west. So until we get a connector for Pacific Street, you know, and the eventual expansion, you know, for another east-west connection, that's going to be, that's going to be it, we're only going to get more traffic there. So the point of, uh, working with the county and trying to get an improvement there is some sort of improvement, we, we don't know quite yet what that, what that will look like, um, so.
But I know if the county wants it, then mostly we're county roads anyway.
No, this, this, county's not driving this necessarily. We, we've, we've let it be known that it's, we're two county roads, two arterials meet, and that, the, the, the city's growth hinges on that. If we put any more housing up north, if we have any more, um, you know, development of a town, which is going to happen, it's all kind of funneling through there. So what we have, status quo, ne- needs to be improved upon, whether that's more lanes, signalization, whatever, roundabout is just one of the, one of the, uh, possible treatments. I, now, I will say I was, uh, my in-laws live in Bend, I was just there over the weekend, and you know, it's a town full of roundabouts, and you, they operate quite well, I, it, it is nice to know that no one's going to T-bone when you're going through something, but, yeah.
Pedestrian traffic, either.
In Bend?
Yeah. And they're mostly on circuits.
Um.
I bike.
Yes, it's a pretty busy town, yeah.
It's a busy town, where they're at. It's mostly road traffic, not pedestrian.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're.
Circles that you see come up are not in pedestrian areas, and I just fear when you put this big walkway in.
Yeah.
What could happen, and just trying to get around them.
Yeah. Well, fortunately, there will be, there'll be some discussions, there'll be plenty of design meetings, yeah.
But we're going to have the time, it keeps coming up.
Okay, and, and yes, it would not look like that was, whatever, whatever that was, however that was designed in Sunset Ridge, it would be a, a different, that is a traffic circle that was not the most highly functioning thing, this would be an actual roundabout with looking at different multimodal connection points and, um, probably, uh, some signalization for the railroad because of the proximity and things like that.
We have plenty of room here, it's very tight, so there'll be a lot of stuff to work, to put that in. You've got a lot of truck traffic.
Yeah, there, there would be some right-of-way acquisition here. Yeah. Okay, thank you, Counselor, um, Smith, for that comment.
Any other comments on, um, Randy, Counselor Payton? All right.
Thank you, Ms.
How about Sheldon?
No, okay, but thank you.
Thank you.
The only question I really had is, just to get some sense of what the outlook looks like for getting another, with the current climate and unemployment, another staffer on the account.
Well, one of my comments tonight was going to be to thank Bill for making sure that people and vendors are getting paid, but he doesn't like the attention, so I, 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 uh, forewent, I, I decided not to do that, but, um, yeah. The, the climate, um, I mean, it's tough to tell until we really get some, some applicants rolling in. One of the things we are working with is a CPA firm that helped us with some of the financials and the audit preparation this year. So I know Bill's been chatting with them about, um, helping them to help find the pavement, you know, whatever, find, fi- find applicants down the pavement as, as we sort of design what that position's going to, to, to look like. But I don't know if you have anything more to, to add there, but.
Yeah. Uh, thank you, Andy, um, Counselor Sheldon, I, um, I, I frankly, um, am giving thought to and appreciate the comment, uh, with the question that you raised. Um, I think in particular, there, there's probably room as the city grows and finances interface with development services and building permits and fees and all of that. Um, over time, I, I, I think that area in particular, that kind of interface between the two departments, i- is going to give sooner rather than later opportunity to kind of expand our ability to, to, to do things in finance with, uh, development and growth as it occurs. So, um, I'd really like to see that happen, um, and again, sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I didn't.
That's it, okay.
Uh, about the, uh, backflow, I had a notice also that came in, and, um, I have a schedule for August, I had one built last August, and I called today the backflow person, actually, they're hell of a. I called today the backflow person, actually, hello, I'm Easter and we called back today. My last one was done at the very end of July. I have a ninety-day to get it done. Notice it came a few weeks ago. Is the city trying to do it all at one time? So we have it all in like two, one. That may cause a constraint of how fast they can do it and whether you have to uh schedule the backflow to come out. So I'm trying to figure out the timeliness. Do we want to have a backflow testing season or because ninety days is not from, it's good for a year and that's going to be taking a quarter of a year off you to get done now. And I also like to encourage the city to actually own the backflow like you're doing. I took the class myself to see how it worked. It took three days and uh even I could do it in the past. So uh it's it doesn't take too much investment. You do a backflow certifier to do it. And that's a pretty good, you know, times uh saver. Takes about, if you're like me and stumbling around if you're new at it, it takes fifteen minutes. If you're good at it, thirty-five. So that's a, I think it's a pretty good thing to uh look at, have it have us doing it.
Yeah, that that Javier's getting um uh, he's taking pride in the program and I think that's going to be the goal is to make that as effective and efficient as possible, not only for for the community and residents, but also for him to not have to chase down things. So.
Yeah, the the backflow company said, well, I'm planning the North Plains about to do the North Plains close up shortly, come in the next couple of weeks. Do you want to spend yours then? Like, well, no, because that's seventy-five percent. I'm missing hour, I shouldn't say, I'm I'm on the stat. I may call back up and see if I'll do this quick. Uh, also about the uh about the roundabout. Um, over at Intel, it's the main parking area. There's a roundabout there. And it helps out a lot. We have seven thousand people coming to work at the same time. And um it's really nice and it's right there near the radio station is the uh what is that, which is the central neighborhood. And people come from Met and walk over and they eventually will be there. And it works out, works out pretty well. It's speedy to get people to 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 from work. There's all, there's just stop signs there. To be backed up or I don't know how long that that they, no, I I support that.
Any other comments or questions for Andy? All right, are there any council reports? All right, we have uh upcoming meetings. Um, it's like um councillor Smith and the economic development um on the eighth of third. I'm scheduled for the Parks and Recreation Board on the eighth. Councillor Martinez is our planning commission and councillor Page.
She told me you switched to planning commission. It didn't get on that form, but.
Oh, yeah. Thank you for the reminder. I was looking at this calendar and.
Right.
Even better. Yep, thank you. And then uh that works out. And then councillor Page, you're at the library board, okay, seventeen. Um, if there are no objections, we will now have to move into executive session. All right, so uh we've already moved forward. Take your time. Andy still needs to. So uh Bonnie, if you know, we're going to have to ask you to uh go ahead and log up executive session with the council and the city staff. Thank you.
Go, go ahead and read.
Okay.
Yeah, because I'll, I'll do it when you're done, yeah.
The city council will now meet in executive session under ORS one-nine-two dot six-six-zero parentheses two parentheses H to consult with the council concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body regarding current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. Only news media representatives and staff designated by the city council are permitted to attend the executive session. News media representatives, staff and council members are respectfully directed not to report on any of this section that occurred during the session, except to state the general subject as previously announced. The council will return to regular session if there is a need for action on the executive session item. No final action or decision may be taken in executive session. Any materials distributed will be collected by the city recorder at the end.
I will now the executive session at eight on six. All right. Um. So I'm going to go ahead and um adjourn the city council meeting at eight twenty-six and a half.